Good evening, welcome to the Garrett County Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to call this meeting into order. Let it be noted that the superintendent and two board members are here. Three board members are here, I'm sorry. And we're missing Dr. Lamb. Her husband had a farming accident and had to be taken to the emergency room. And so, we're in prayers for her husband. And let us also keep Brother Jerry, our board chairman, in prayers as he's had an eye operation. He's had strict instructions not to bend over and he's got to go back and have it looked at again on Monday. So, again, keep him in your prayer. At this time, I'd ask you to join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I'd like everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I believe we adopt the agenda.
Motion made for Ms. Davis to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor? The agenda is adopted. At this time, as Brother Jerry would always say, this is his favorite part when it comes to recognitions. And so, we always are privileged to honor students and teachers and community members and acknowledge how important they are to the success of our educational environment. So, at this time, I'll turn the recognitions over to Dr. Stulp.
So, if the board members will make their way over, with the board member's permission, we're going to change a little bit the order. And we're going to start with item number four instead of item number one. We would like to take this opportunity tonight to do a legislative recognition of David Mead. So, we invite Representative Mead to come up and join the board members. David Mead has been a member of the Kentucky House of Representatives since 2013. He currently serves as Speaker of the Pro Tem and is Vice Chair of the Committee on Committees and the Rules Committee. But more importantly, David Mead represents Garrett County. Tonight, we'd like to say thank you to Representative Mead for all he has done to bring additional support to the county in general, but to Garrett County schools specifically. Because of his efforts, Garrett County schools received $7 million over a two-year time span. That money was dedicated to renovations across the districts, across the district, and those funds have made it possible to update the sidewalks, arcing, and front entry at GMS. Additionally, those funds have allowed updates to several HVA systems across the district, and the digital signs that you see in front of our buildings are made possible by his efforts. And these are just a couple of the examples of what those funds have gone for. But just as importantly is the amount of general fund money that those dollars have saved and freed up for us. We're grateful to Representative Mead for truly representing us in the legislature. And tonight, we'd like to say thank you, public. Next, we'd like to recognize Svetlana Jacobs as our Teacher of the Month. Ms. Jacobs is one of the kindest and most caring individuals you'll ever meet. She truly invests in the children she serves, extending that care to their families and ensuring they feel supported and included in every aspect of school life. Her advocacy for students' needs, understanding, and inclusion makes a difference in both their learning and their sense of belonging. Svetlana sets high expectations for her students and communicates those expectations clearly to both students and families while also providing the support needed to achieve success. She partners closely with families and administrators, bringing strong connections that help students thrive both in and out of the classroom. She is constantly finding new ways to support our ELL students and to strengthen relationships with their families, and she is an invaluable resource to students, families, and staff alike. With her unwavering commitment, excellent follow-through, and genuine heart for children and families, Svetlana exemplifies what it means to be an educator of excellence. We're so grateful for her dedication and proud to celebrate her as Garrett County's Teacher of the Month. Next, we'll be recognizing our Garrett County Schools Farmer's National Bank Students of the Month, and I don't think our CDR student is here tonight. So, we'll make sure she gets the recognition she's supposed to get. Our next recognition is from L.E.S., and it's Sloman Crushfield. Sloman is a kindergartner, and she's a shining example of kindness and responsibility. She's always well behaved, makes the right choices, and sets a positive example for her classmates. She's a true role model, a wonderful friend to all, and we're so proud to have her as part of our leavened family. Next, from Paintwick, is Willa Black. Willa is a fifth grader at Paintwick, and she has been selected as Students of the Month for consistently demonstrating outstanding character, dedication to learning, and a positive attitude in and out of the classroom. Willa shows respect for peers and teachers taking initiative in all of her classes and contributing positively to the school community. Willa's classmates know her for her kindness and willingness to help others, and we're grateful that she's a Paintwick superstar. Next, from Garrett Middle School, it's Zeke Sandsville. Zeke's an eighth grader at GMS, and he's been an asset in the classroom already this school year. He's helped new students feel more comfortable and welcome. He is also supportive of all of his other peers as well. He works diligently in class to complete his assignments and complete them correctly. Keep it up, Zeke, and we're glad that you are a GMS Cooper. And our final recognition tonight is from Garrett County High School, Katie Floyd. Katie is an active member of our FBLA program. She also serves as a volunteer for the local 4-H organization. She's very competitive and has been instrumental in creating a culture of success at GCHS. She graduated with 30-plus hours of dual credit, has taken and passed multiple AP classes in all four core content areas, has a GPA over 4.0, and has a friendly personality, is hardworking, and has been exemplary student for her classmates and community. GCHS would like to thank Katie Floyd for exemplifying the core values of the high school.
Again, we congratulate again all the winners and thank you for your time and success and sacrifice to our school system. Next, we'll go to the site-based decision minutes, and each board member's had a chance to see those. If we have any questions, we can see Dr. Stulp, and he can clarify anything for us on the... Next, we come to the part for audience comments. We see that we have two requests for audience comment, and we'll start there. And I don't know whether you all have talked or not. Do you want one, who you want to go first?
We're going to sit here together.
All right? That'd be great. And according to board rules, each one has five minutes. First of all, let me say thank you for coming and sharing.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'll just start. Good afternoon. My name is Shelby Crisp, and I'm a mental health therapist working in our community for over six years at CKCA. I stand before you all today to ask you to reconsider the decision of allowing only one provider to treat our kids at school. I know this choice was made with our kids' best interests at heart. I know you often hear criticism and judgment of tough choices made for our kids, and I don't want to be one of those people today, but rather a community partner asking you to see another side of this. I know the choice was made to reduce time that our kids have away from class meeting with us to have education come first and reduce the safety risk of adults coming in and out of our schools. Those are both very important issues that should be valued above all, learning and safety. But I would ask you to consider is not the potential threat of the licensed therapists coming into the schools, but the silent deadly threat that our kids are fighting and unfortunately statistically losing within their own minds. Time is the second leading cause for death in kids. The risk is not the therapists that enter our schools who have to pass vigorous state and federal background checks each year to even maintain our license, but the risk of if you let our kids have to do this fight alone. With this new policy, we have even been told we cannot see our kids virtually, even though safety has been listed as a primary concern. Last year alone, with all the Garrett County agencies and even outside agencies coming into the schools, the middle school alone had a waitlist of over 100 kids that were still waiting to see a therapist. If we're not allowed in and CAFKA has this wait on their own, we cannot confidently say that the need could be met, but rather only drastically increased. I don't challenge that CAFKA cannot do this alone as a business hoping to reduce competition in the schools when all of our agencies are packing down waitlist pages long. I ask you to consider for all the kids that just cannot be scheduled from three to five. They may not have parents that have the transportation to bring them to our office, and specifically for my kids, that have seen me for five-plus years and have given me the privilege to sit with them in some of the darkest spaces that a kid should not sit alone. My kids are the ones that are in ISS for days of time. My kids are the one best-case scenario that are gone for hours facing disciplinary measures, weeks to months in and out of psychiatric facilities, and even one of my kids that tragically lost that battle entirely. Yes, our kids will miss an hour weekly of reviewing new concepts, but within that hour with me, most of the time, I'll challenge that their teacher does not in fact truly hate them, but that they should maybe take a step back and reassess some of their behaviors. We tackle relationships, self-harm, and the mental battle that if not addressed makes the other eight hours of all the school day null and void, when their minds are screaming so loud that the content, the math, wouldn't even be seeking in to begin with. You may save an hour of education each week with this decision, but you risk a lifetime of consequences. I know I speak not only for myself, but all of the providers when I beg you to please not ask our kids to be forced to switch to other counselors from the ones that have fought side by side with them for years. To ask this is not only unethical, but dangerous. We are all fighting this battle together, but I ask in this difficult time that you do not remove more soldiers from this fight. I ask that you allow any and everyone willing to fight for our kids in this losing mental health battle to have access to them in the place where most, without the best of means, will only have access to see providers, in the schools. Please allow us to help this fight or our fear for the growing list of kids that will be forced to do this alone. Thank you.
Good evening. Shelby is actually my therapist. I think we've been together for, what, five-plus years? So, that consistency has been something that has saved my life, if I'm being honest about it. So, this touches my heart today because consistency is profoundly important for the well-being of our children. Consistency is stability in mental health care. For many students, the therapist is a crucial part of their support system, but for that support to be truly effective, it must be unwavering, and that starts with who they see. Think about a child with therapy. It's not just an appointment they check off a list, it's the journey of vulnerability, trust, and self-discovery. This process relies on a powerful bond, a therapeutic alliance. This alliance is not formed overnight, it is built session by session through consistent presence, nonjudgmental listening, and shared understanding. For a child, their therapist becomes a safe harbor, a steady and predictable presence of what might be a very turbulent world for them. This consistent relationship provides the foundation for them to open up, process difficult emotions, and learn the tools they need to thrive. This is why we must reconsider our school's approach to this. Too often, students have to miss class time, sometimes even important classes, to attend therapy appointments outside of school. This forces them to choose between their education and their mental health. Instead, schools should allow professional, out-of-school therapists to work with students onsite. By integrating this care into the school day, perhaps here in a study hall, a free period, or even lunch, we send a powerful message that a student's mental health is not a hindrance to their education, but a core component of it. It removes a significant barrier and ensures that they don't have to trade one form of progress for another. The benefits of this stability are immediately evident, both in and out of the classroom. In school, a child who has consistent therapy support is better able to manage anxiety and regulate their emotions. This leads to improved focus and behavior, which directly benefits their academic performance. They're more present, they're more engaged, and they're more receptive to learning. Beyond the school walls, this stability helps them build a strong sense of self. It equips them with the emotional resilience to navigate friendships, family dynamics, and the inevitable challenges of growing up. They learn to identify their feelings, communicate their needs, and solve problems in healthy ways. But what happens when this consistent relationship is broken? What happens when the child is forced to switch therapists, perhaps due to a change in insurance, a move, or in this case, a policy that doesn't prioritize consistency? It's profoundly harmful, where a child, this feels like an abandonment of trust that they worked so hard to build. The progress they made is invalidated, and they are forced to start from scratch with a new person, a stranger who doesn't understand their story. a stranger who doesn't understand their story, their fears, or their triumphs. This disruption could cause significant regression and make them hesitant to ever truly open up again and setting them back months or even years in their journey toward healing. In conclusion, prioritizing consistent mental health care for our children is not just an act of kindness. It is a critical investment in their future. By supporting a child's long-term relationship with a therapist by making it possible for that work to happen during the school day, we are building a more resilient, emotionally intelligent, and academically successful generation. Let's commit to giving our children the stable support that they deserve. And then lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't get this off my chest, but it takes small people to punish someone for having an opposing opinion, especially when that punishment only hurts children further by taking away memories that they were beginning to for free. If you're an elected official, you're paid by tax dollars, and your boss is the community. You have to be able to take criticism, not just listen to it, but take that viewpoint into consideration. It's your duty. I'm on the city council, so I know about public criticism. I can proudly say I've never blocked someone from social media for having a different sort of opinion on City Matters. Censorship by tax-paid employees, it's authoritarianism. It has no place in the school system. It's petty, it's asinine, it's childish, and it's dictatorship-like, and that shouldn't be encouraged. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to thank Ms. Crisp, I'd like to thank Mr. Boone for sharing your concerns with us. This is not on our agenda today, but rest assured, we will discuss the topic. We'll share it with our committee and go forward from there and see where it takes us. But obviously, because it's not on the agenda, we can't do it today. But we certainly appreciate your concerns, and they will be voiced, and we will definitely examine what you're having to say.
Will you let us know when it is on the agenda?
Well, if it gets here. If it's on the agenda, it'll be publicized.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And thank you for your concerns and your faith in us and your statements.
Okay.
That's number one. Thank you.
At this time, if you have any comments, any of the board members have any comments or anything you'd like to share at this time?
I would just like for everyone to know what a wonderful regional KSB meeting we had at the high school last week, last Tuesday night. We would have to be proud of how our students participated, prepared the food, having welcomed our guests, showed off our facilities. It was just a nine-three-and-three-eight of the fifty-yard line, what about them? Which was just really nice, it was a neat experience. We just want to thank all those. Mr. Anderson, I know it disrupted your day, but it was worth it. And to those that had to clean up at the end, Mr. Reginald, he would make it up. Take those hot steps there at the end, but it was a wonderful experience. Just wanted to hope to note what a good, I can't name everyone, but it was great. Thank you.
Any comments? At this time, we'll go to our superintendent, Dr. Stoll, and let him exercise his part of the program.
So we've promised that we'll continue to update you on bonding capacity. So you see that there, the bonding capacity went up about just under $200,000 since last month. You all are aware that the feds reduced interest rates yesterday, so that may have an impact moving forward. But the changes, at this point, not a significant amount, but want to keep you up to speed on that. Also wanted to make you aware of some work that started this past Monday with our teacher leaders. They are in the process of developing a parent toolkit, and that parent toolkit will consist of a series of one-pagers that uses parent-friendly language to outline what a student is learning in classes and in grade levels. And you might say, well, aren't there already syllabuses out there? But I would suggest that some of that's not parent-friendly all the time, and we're going to do our best to make sure that that happens with our teacher leaders taking responsibility on this. They're doing quick practical ideas of how support can happen at home with students. They're going to have possible links to appropriate supports. There'll be a digital connection, so this will be on websites, but we'll also produce some hard copies for individuals who prefer that hard copy. So as time moves forward, we'll be sharing that with you. Again, we are only days into this, and we're excited about what that's going to look like. And then we also wanted to make sure that we noted a first-time-ever occurrence here in the county on Saturday. The band will be hosting the first-ever competition held here in Garrett County. And our band's known for being very successful in band competitions all over the place, and they will not be competing on Saturday. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that. They will be working like crazy on Saturday, because we have a large number of bands who will be there. There are sixteen bands coming, six at the 1A level, five at the 2A level, three at the 4A level, and two at the 5A level. So again, large numbers who are going to be there. The gates will open at 10:45. If everything goes great, we'll be done about twelve hours later, about ten or eleven o'clock on Saturday night. So if you come, it's a $12 admission, but you'll get a wristband that allows you to come and go as much as you need to. Preliminary awards around 4:30, finals begin at seven. Our band will perform in an exhibition at 9:45. And again, if everything goes great, we'll have 10 o'clock awards. So we're excited about this. The high school was putting up temporary lighting tonight to help with parking that will go on and people leaving at 10:30, 11 o'clock. We'll need to be able to see how to get to cars, so we appreciate the efforts that are going on there. So if you have any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Stoll. And at this time, we'll move to our reports.
You have linked and in your packet the treasurer's report. Hopefully, you've taken some time to review that. We'll have a chance to approve that in a few minutes in the consent agenda. We've attached the bills that have been part of the September pay. That was updated as late as this morning, so that's as accurate as it can possibly be.
At this point, we'll move to the consent agenda. Everything's listed there, had a chance to look over it. Do I have a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve it. Do you have a second?
A second.
That's a second. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you that you approved. Next, we'll move on to the action agenda, and we will follow Dr. Stoll through that.
So the first item that we have is approve the working budget for the 25-26 school year. You just saw the current status, but this is the budget that we approved at this point. Ms. Coffey has worked on this since January and has finalized that now. I shared a summary with you the other day. We've attached more information there. The anticipation is to close next year with an eight percent contingency, and that's in that general vicinity of the ten that we hoped for to stay with. So we will be diligent this year to try to make sure that we pull you back in at that level, if not a little bit more. So based on that, it's my recommendation that you approve the working budget for the 25-26 school year.
We have a, on the floor to approve the working budget. Do I have a motion to approve it?
I move to approve the working budget for 25-26.
We have a motion to approve it, a second? All in favor? I didn't ask if there was any question, but it passed anyways. Next, we'll go to item B, approve capital funds request.
We're going to do something a little bit different this year at the recommendation of Ms. Coffey. In the past, we have waited till the end of the year to do capital funds requests, but we don't have to do that. So as the need comes up this year, she's going to be asking us to consider for approval some capital funds requests. This first request is for the purchase of two buses. If you make this happen today, then we already have the funds that will be placed to take care of that. It seems like a logical way to do it as opposed to wait until the end of the year for everything. So it's my recommendation that you approve the capital funds request for the purchase of two school buses.
We have a situation where we want to try to approve the additional, I'm sorry, the capital funds request for the bus purchases. Do I have a motion to approve the bus purchases?
I'll make a motion to approve the capital fund request for two buses.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Any comments, questions? All in favor to approve the bus purchases? It's unanimous. Next, we go to approve an additional special education teacher position for Garrett Middle School for the 25-26 school year.
This is the second month in a row we've had to come to you and ask for additional personnel, and we only do that when we're at a spot where it's a necessity. It's not something that we take lightly, but there is a significant need at the middle school to accommodate their teacher caseloads and the number of students who are on those caseloads. And due to that, I would recommend the approval of an additional special education teacher for GMS for the 25-26 school year.
We have a request to approve the additional special education teacher position for Garrett Middle School. Do I have a motion to approve that?
I move to approve the additional special education teacher for GMS.
Motion to approve. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second and questions? All in favor? It's approved unanimously. Next, we have a motion to approve the shortened school day for Garrett County, for any Garrett County high school students.
We only ask for this when there is a need for the student. We only do that when there's a doctor recommendation for that. There is a need and a doctor's recommendation for this student at Garrett County High School, so it's my recommendation that you approve a shortened school day for this student.
Do we have a motion to approve a shortened school day for the Garrett County High School student?
I'll make a motion to approve the shortened school day for the GCHX student.
We have the motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Any questions? All in favor? Approve unanimously. Next, we go to E, approve creation of student worker cloud operations specialist one apprenticeship.
So this is an opportunity to have a student as an apprentice. I've dug a little bit deeper into this to try to answer some questions for you on this one, because when I read student worker cloud operations specialist one, that doesn't necessarily tell me anything, but this student is going to be hired at the high school and will be functioning as an apprentice, working on, again, computerized technology. So this is a great opportunity. There's zero cost to the high school, zero cost to the district. It's funded through a grant that we have, so it's a great opportunity to give this kid an experience that they couldn't get anywhere else. And because of that, I would recommend the creation of a student worker cloud operations specialist one apprenticeship.
We have a request to approve the creation of a student worker cloud operations specialist one apprenticeship, and I have a motion to do that.
I move that we approve the creation of the student worker.
Motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, we have a question.
One, so one position or two?
One. Any other question? All in favor? Motion approved unanimously. Next, we have a request to approve community forums, dates, and location.
Last month, you all approved of having some community forums to answer questions that the community might have about why there's not been motion or action on building a gym. And in order to provide that opportunity, we have come up with three locations to allow you to speak and listen, more than anything else, to the community to hear what they have to say. Those locations are Paint Lake Elementary on Tuesday, September 30th, Camp Dick Robinson on Tuesday, October 14th, and Lancaster Elementary on Tuesday, October 21st. We've checked with you and outside of one individual who might be dealing with birth that they will have coming up. I think these dates and times work for everyone. The schools have been fine with that, and we appreciate the schools allowing us to have that opportunity. So based on that, it would be my recommendation that you approve the community forum dates and locations.
We have a recommendation to approve community forums, dates, and locations are noted. Do we have a motion on the floor for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the community forum dates and locations.
Motion made. Do you have a second?
A second to motion.
We have a second. Any question? All in favor? Motion approved unanimously. Next, we come to the point where we want to go to an executive session. Do I have a motion to go move into the executive session?
I move that we move to the executive session.
Motion on the floor. Do we have a second? At this time, we'll be moving into the executive session. You're welcome to come back after we're through. You're welcome to go on home, but we thank you for your participation.
Want to take a vote on that?
Oh, just take a vote. All in favor? Unanimously approved for executive session. Unanimously approved for executive session.